Thank you. And I have approval of the minutes for the January 12, 2015 meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, skip the roll call, sorry, roll call please. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
This is Cogswell Graydon. Mr. Scipora. Mr. Baldmarry?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolfman? Here. Now we have approval of the minutes from the January 12, 2015 meeting. Angel, you have the...
Do it. I move the minutes of the January 12, 2015 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading or inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I second that motion.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and pay bills for the month of January 2015?
I'll make a motion.
I need a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussions? Since Mike's not here, I'll ask Mike's question. Barb, is there anything unusual?
Hello?
Oh, Jerry, I'm sorry.
I'll defer to...
Is there anything out at the door or is anyone... I'm sorry, would you say there is not?
No, there is not.
Okay, so when Mike Scipora is watching this video tonight when he gets home, he'll know that we asked. Okay. At this time, it's citizens' request to discuss any items that are on the agenda. So if anyone has any questions about item agendas, yes? Did you...oh, were you just waving, John?
Yes, sorry.
Dr. Martin said something.
I was saying a little wave.
Oh, okay. Any citizens' request to deal with items that are on the agenda? Again, we'll have the time at the end of the meeting to discuss any open items that you'd like to discuss, but any agenda items, please go to the microphone and state your name and address. Okay, moving on. Committee reports. Finance. Madeline, do you have anything?
No, nothing this evening.
Public safety, Julia or Jerry?
Neighborhood watch meeting, March 2nd, 6:30. We're going to be stuffing bags. We have various information packets that we're going to be stuffing in bags and hopefully going door to door and giving them to, I think, everybody in the city. I'm not sure how many Jim has. So we can use members and we can use people help to stuff them, so 6:30 here.
March 2nd, 6:30. Personnel committee, neither of them are here. I just, I will update you briefly that there's civil services in the process of filling positions that we have. Jim, do you want to...
Yes.
...update us on that?
Yes, the written test is completed. All the veteran education points are added and we have, eight people have passed. They're ranked one through eight and we'll interview the top three for a position.
Okay, thank you. Public works, Madeline or Jerry? And it's nothing like any of that, okay? Board and authority reports. I have asked Jared Trunzo from the Latrobe Revitalization Committee to come to this meeting today and just give us a brief update about what revitalization is up to.
Sure.
So, thank you, Jared.
You're welcome.
There is a lot of really good things going on with the revitalization committee and if we're...one shortcoming is probably we're not doing a real good job maybe of getting our message out there. We're trying, but it's not easy, so I thought this might be a good way for at least everyone on council and the residents that are here tonight to get a snapshot of some of the things that are going on. Could you bring any extras of these for the...
I do. They're, I think it passes out Joe, it's in my seat, if anybody wants some. We're running a hand in groups of...
Yeah, would you mind passing those out to the residents? Thanks.
Okay, so what I try to do here is put numerical sort of sequence. This is paint a picture of what we're talking about. This isn't comprehensive, but it's a snapshot of a couple of projects being wrapped up recently and also paints a picture of some things that are coming. 1A and first and second columns, we see some of our facades. What we have is a four-point approach. We are a nationally accredited Main Street program in 501(c)(3), so that four approach is through promotions, economic restructuring, organization and design and facade. So these are a product of the Design Facade Committee. We still offer a dollar-for-dollar matching grant up to $5,000 for the core downtown businesses. So you see some of the ones we've wrapped up recently. In the bottom middle right, you'll see Mullen and the Latanzio Building. We are tentatively scheduled to do two significant facade renovations there. So that's exciting. It looks like the first phase of Latanzio slash Vansland, Cloud Ice, whatever you call it, should begin in March. So we're excited to start that. 2A, we went to Weldon and Main Street, the Ligonier elderly home. We replaced about seven street trees, found they were dying, back-to-back plantings because they were planted actually in modified stone and not soil. So we replaced all of that with seven proper street trees. It was no charge to them. We were able to fundraise it. Also on 2B, by the medicine shop, if you see the bottom right, those trees have fire blade. We're not looking to increase the number of trees in any of these areas. It's basically to replace the ones that are dying and spreading disease, so...
I just want to add, you know, we've had in the past issues with trees, but we've done a lot of research. Jared, do you want to talk a little bit about the trees that were, the kind of trees that are specially designed to not tear up concrete and all that stuff?
Part of our committee, we went through the tree revitalization training. We have retired arborists and landscape architects that volunteer their time. Jim Walters is one. Dan Yates in the Mini Gardens also sits on our design committee. So the type of trees that we're going after are urban street trees that are salt-resistant and calm. There, kind of think of them as growing like a champagne glass of what you see in the past seven plantings on Lloyd Avenue. The issue from the past where a lot of these trees arguably were not street trees or planted in a depression that was way too small, could not take enough rainwater, they basically would die out or buckle the sidewalks. The ones we're planting, it's impossible to buckle the sidewalks because of their root structure. So, you know, we're basically going back and correcting it. And they're clean, too. They don't have crab apples falling and, you know, so forth, so... 3A is the post office. So those shrubs there have, were, they were growing out of control. It was actually kind of hard for even someone in wheelchair to get through the sidewalk there. We removed those with help of Adelphi volunteers. And then I was actually contacted by a lady whose daughter passed away. She used to love downtown Latrobe and she's wanting to do something with the bench. So she bought one of our Keystone benches, put her daughter's name on it. It just arrived. And then we went and we were blessed to raise about $8,500 and get the blessing from the post office to put in a creative placemaking project, which also received a $2,000 grant. We should start in March there. So the tentative blueprint is on the top right of 3A. But again, this is a creative placemaking project. There's going to be a nice soft scape permanent bench, impossible to steal, it'll be deadbolted into the ground with concrete anchors. It's going to face Rogers Park. Working with Joe on this one and Ian actually initially recommended the bench face this way, which is nice because the improvements to Rogers Park that'll be coming next year with historical marker that we secured, I think about a year ago for Fred, is going to be coming into the park, too. So it's right facing there. So that's that project. 4A is the grub and pub which burned down. We were fortunate to receive a competitive grant for $25,000 through Revitalways in West Moreland. Previously, we had a $13,000 grant to secure the walls and that was well received by Francesca's K3 because that's the site of her business. The design elements are not completed. They're in their final stage, but if you look at the right of 4B, one of the elements is capturing, you know, our storied history. So this has been done in other cities where they basically take those historical features off their town. We have so many additions to the buildings and kind of put those exterior lights to capture that and, you know, as you're walking past, you can read and so forth. 5A was a lot project we wrapped up last year. We're staying on top of it. Those are actually my daughter's volunteering. That's what happens when they get in trouble. But that was about a $9,000 project that was pulled off again with no taxpayer money, all in kind. And Mini Gardeners and that's next to the liquor store and the gun store on Depot. 5B, working with Wayne on the curb cuts. We're working on design with Gibson Thomas to replace the ones that had issues. 5C, that's actually Bazila Concrete. I worked with John Bazila, the owner, on a couple of projects. That's actually WCCC, just a plug. I don't think they're going to get LEED certified, but it's basically a LEED certified building without the actual stamp. So they've got a bunch of the bells and whistles for the highest standards of their building. That's actually purpose concrete. If you look, if you're coming Depot at the intersection to get back onto Lloyd on the right there, actually, actually coming up to Depot on the right, that's to the right of the entrance, sort of. That's all purpose concrete, so the rainwater goes through it. There's so many things in that building that are exciting on that end, so... And I think they're opening up a few months, maybe, thinking of the way. Couple more here. 6A, our promotions committee was traditionally in the past, through the other directors, focused on events. We're changing that a bit. Some of the events I'll get into have been delegated to other organizations. They're still going to happen. They're still going to grow. But 6A is just a way of promoting our downtown merchants and a culture of shopping locally. The image to the right talks about the dollar spent. This is not an anti Route 30 or anti-mall. It's simply saying that big box stores, if you spend a dollar, 80 cents to that dollar tends to leave town. When you shop local and locally owned businesses, 45 cents to that dollar stays locally. So it's almost like every 50 cents you spend, 50 cents stays and is reinvested locally. Okay, so we're sensitive that you can't get everything downtown, but what we're trying to say is, you know, in addition to your normal spending habits, try coming downtown and plus there's a lot of differentiated products you can't actually get, I think, on a lot of those stores out there, so... 7A is the street furniture we've been issuing for a couple of years now. It's been going good. We've also been working with Joe and Wayne on some new sign improvements. You have the fully Pendock compliant street signs with the trauma on them. They're high intensity and we're working with Scott Segal Special Light. He actually is here in Latrobe and Derry and they outfitted the Arlington National Cemetery and cities throughout the country basically are redoing their streetscape and their street signs to make them nicer and more durable. So this is a fully Pendock compliant breakaway design. We haven't implemented it yet. We're still in the planning phase, so... 8A is just a snapshot of our base mapping for the Saint Vincent to Latrobe Trail. We've got a new committee dedicated now, a bunch of, almost all new fresh faces on the committee, which actually formed a board of directors. So we got a lot done in the past five months. I'd almost say we got more done in the past five months than in a couple of years, so that's exciting. A lot of those hurdles are out of the way, so 8B is the Lincoln Avenue Trail and Greenway. I'm not the project lead for this, but I will say it's a complete streets design, which is different than your typical trail. So this trail is not going to be just a straight shot. It can meander a little bit. The real estate agents I've spoken with and the county planning professionals have talked about an increase in property values from 8% to 15% on all the properties that intersect from 981 to 982, which is massive. Okay, that's almost like a, you know, that's a secondary effect. The first is, of course, is the recreational use. But what we saw from hailstorm, that was a blessing because that helped give, right, everybody a new side of your roofs, but a trail like this can help with stormwater management from the trees that we're going to put in there. And actually, the complete streets component is traffic calming. So if you go to Montana, the speed limit is a lot higher. Why? Because you don't have anything on either side. You're psychologically more apt to drive faster when there isn't something hugging you. So when you have scape that we're talking about, it helps you slow down.
I just wanted to add one comment. I think in Mar, at the March meeting, I've asked that some people come and talk a little bit more detail about the Lincoln Avenue Trail because I think we'll have designs done by then?
Yeah, Rich Rosso is working with Jeannie in the committee on that. I think Rich is planning on coming to show council the tentative plans of the Lincoln Avenue Trail, which is looking, I think, great for out this summer. But again, Rich, I defer those questions to Rich and Jeannie. It's going to coincide with the deck hockey updates. Okay, 9A, that's, the top part of 9A is the study that was finished 2006 for completing Lloyd Avenue. As you know, Lloyd Avenue has come a long way. It still has a long way to go, but starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, 4.65 million has been spent on Lloyd Avenue since 2001. That is substantial. From the removal of telephone poles to demoing the blighted homes, there's a couple more still, but most of them are out. Putting single post pedestrian lighting, instrut trees and purpose concrete. So we're pretty far. Obviously, there's some technical things. You cannot just move telephone pole. You need, you need the permission of the landowner, so we're close. We have about 6,500 right now we've raised. Huge thanks to the Latrope National Development Authority who gave us 5,000. And we have another grant we're waiting to hear in a few weeks if we got it. Once that's matched, we'll implement April, May, you know, on this next phase. So that next phase, near Dunkin' Donuts, we are booking at installing single baluster lighting, which is already there. Long-term removal of telephone poles into the alley and instruturing both sides. And as you can see, too, there's an inconsistency in the trees there. Some are massive and they're buckling the sidewalk. We would pay fully for all of this, to remove those trees with landowner's own permission and then plant a smaller one, as you see basically from country farms to Dunkin' Donuts, if that makes sense. So, classified. Okay. 10A, we had presented, Wayne and I and a few others, we presented at the Parking Authority meeting a couple of weeks ago. We've been planning this ever since I was working in City Hall with Ann and we looked out the window and talked about the possibility of a mural against that wall and making improvements. Tom Hilton, who came here, he's a Pulitzer Prize-winning speaker. He talked about save our land, save our towns. This concept was done in a bunch of other cities, so we said, okay, is this possible? We looked at where the lines were and everything else, so we met with Parking Authority in June. We took their feedback. We came back to the drawing board and presented again and they approved it unanimously. What it's going to look like is, none of that's there right now. The only thing that's in this lot is basically that one light in the middle. That one light in the middle is fitting for a car dealership or a mall, right, the style. So we're looking to put in those single baluster pedestrian lighting, especially with WCCC opening, we're going to think it's going to add safety, it's going to be nicer. And then two trees in the middle and then possibly, this isn't confirmed, excuse me, planters like you see, I say around town from the art center and so forth. And again, that's all on us. The Mini Gardener Group maintains all of that and they do a pretty good job. There's boxes right there now of wood. Those will be removed and these are a bit nicer. And then finally, at the bottom, we're going to start our garden plot soon, so that's good. The farmer's market, we set a record last year with the amount of people coming to the farmer's market and with the amount of vendors. So that's good news. In light of that, I'm doing an assessment right now with the current vendors to see if they'd be willing to stay longer. And I'm hopeful that works out because so many of them are going to have to stay longer. I can say all that one, hey, you should stay till night, but it's going to look like a good chance we're going to stay open until 5:00 to catch a later crowd. Research shows that actually like 4:30 to 7:00 is the prime shopping hour, you know, countrywide, is where people shop the most. And so, you know, the farmer's market has been this busy during lunch hour inconsistently through. Now we're going to try to open up to catch that going home crowd. Okay, Autumn Fest is still happening house under us. The Steelers Fest and the Banana Split Festival, two huge events. Now I, you know, we're really busy as an organization. We're looking to focus more on community development. As far as I know, the Steelers okayed that event happening again and the Banana Split Festival is in the chamber's hands, which that means is if something goes wrong, it's their fault, not mine.
But we're excited it's still going to happen, you know, and so, I defer all your questions
to David and Alan. And then finally, the middle, the middle map, I put these over here this morning, but the middle map, I saw this, this is our comprehensive plan in 2010. We used to have them floating around here. That just shows our core area. If you look at each of those buildings, not every one, about 80% of those have had a lot of positive traction since the comp plan ended in 2010. So our angle is historical preservation and when that's impossible, then, you know, other options have to be met, but it's just a nice snapshot, so...
Thank you, Jared. Does anybody have any questions for Jared? Anything you want to know about what's going on? Okay, thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
I don't think, I don't think we have anything else on any other boards and authorities at this point. Department reports, Mr. Bush?
Nothing at this time.
Chief Budmore?
Just what I said earlier.
Chief Brazelli?
Nothing.
Ann?
Nothing.
Ms. Kelly?
I have a few. First item appears under the Administration Finance Department and it is an ordinance and I will highlight it. It is ordinance number 2015, blank, amending section 3-48 of chapter 3 of the Administrative Code Fee Schedules, specifically Schedule A miscellaneous fees and costs. And whereas the city of Latrobe charges certain fees and costs for administrative, non-administrative purposes, which are set forth in various provisions of the Code of Ordinances, whereas council desires to amend or increase various fees set forth in the Administrative Code, now therefore be resolved, section 1, that chapter 3, section 348 fee schedules is amended to add the following. And the following, and I'll just outline them, are fees for the use of the informational sign that we have in front of the building, for government-related agencies such as the city, Adams Library, the Park and Recreation Commission and the Latrobe Fire companies, there will be no charge for usage at this time. The second category would be mutual aid, ambulance and the school district, one week. The fee is $50, two weeks at $75. Anything longer would be determined on a case-by-case basis. Category 3 is for nonprofits and civic groups, foundations and faith-based organizations. Again, $50 for the first week, $75 for the second week, with longer terms to be determined on a case-by-case basis. Category 4 is for-profit entities. The first week is $300, the second week is 200 or $550. And then personal messages, birthdays and things of that nature, for one week, the fee would be $50. Section 2 recites that any and all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3 says that all other provisions of the Code of Ordinances, not specifically repealed, shall remain in full force and effect. Section 4 authorizes the mayor, city manager, city secretary and any other proper officer to take all steps and assign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this ordinance. Section 5 states that the ordinance shall become effective upon the date of post-enactment publication of notice of passage of the same. Enacted this date, the motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Category 4, personal messages, fee for one week, 300, but then below it says for personal messages, fee for one week, $50. What's the difference?
Do you know the new one?
The difference, the difference is the weekly rate above is for profit organizations, a business. Just an example, I know the Black and Gold Restaurant is asked to have, have something on the sign. That would be that fee, but personal messages would be you wanting to wish your granddaughter a happy birthday for a weekend here on the sign. That's the difference.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2015-4. Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfman?
Yes.
So it's five, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, next item is a, a simple motion. I'm going to read it and then just to offer an explanation. The motion reads, I move to authorize the city manager to take all action and sign any and all documents necessary to implement the lowest bid for the supply of electric energy to city metered and un-metered accounts. And I should add to this motion, and for street lighting accounts, which will result in a savings to the city. Our city manager has received quotes and he needs to go over them to determine which would offer us the most savings. However, these quotes require immediate response in order to preserve them. So what we're asking for council today is to authorize the city manager to review the quotes, pick the one that offers the greatest savings for the city and then to go ahead and enter into the agreement. And what I would then have is a resolution at the next meeting ratifying the actions of the city manager. So we have to move on. That's why we have this motion here for the city.
May I have a motion to...
Is outlined?
Is outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The, the next item that I have is a resolution a while back and we've... Oh, we'll be on tape. We hadn't done this yet, but we need to entertain a resolution appointing a tax collection committee delegate or delegates pursuant to the local earned income tax. And the resolution reads as follows, now therefore be resolved, section 1, that the city does hereby appoint the following individuals as its tax collection committee delegates. A, the primary voting delegate will be the individual holding the office of city manager, namely Wayne B. Jones. B, the first alternate voting delegate will be the person holding the office of the mayor of the city of Latrobe, namely Rosemary M. Wolfman. C, the second alternate voting delegate will be the person holding the office of deputy mayor of the city of Latrobe, namely Mike Scipora. And section 2 reads that it's, if any, if the primary voting delegate cannot be present at the meeting, the first alternate voting delegate will be the representative of the city. If both the primary and second delegates cannot attend the TCC meeting, then the second alternate voting delegate shall represent the city. These appointments are effective immediately and shall continue until successors are appointed. All other resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed, resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions? I have one. Can you explain a little bit about what this is so people understand?
Yeah, the TCC is the Tax Collection Committee, the oversee, with the change in the act recently from the state, I guess a couple of years ago now, there's one tax collector that collects taxes for the entire county and the TCC committee oversees that, makes sure that they're being allotted properly and that they're doing their job.
That, that tax collector is Perkheimer, by the way.
And we've had this committee before. You're just naming it.
Yes, we did, and it was our previous city managers and I think the mayor was, was still the first alternate and the second mayor is the second alternate. That hasn't changed.
Second mayor.
The mayor is the second alternate, yes. Deputy mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Buck? Is the resolution?
This is resolution 2015-5. Mr. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfman?
Yes.
Those five, yes.
The last item I have for an action item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is under the Planning and Development Department. I will read it. It is a resolution. It's entitled, "Reapproving a subdivision request by Edward T. Carfang and an Ed Carroll Carfang, now therefore be resolved." Section one, that the subdivision requested by Edward T. Carfang and an Ed Carroll Carfang applicants, according to the plans and specifications submitted in 1998 to the Latrobe Planning Commission being the same, is hereby approved nunc pro tunc, which means now for them. Section two, that the mayor and city secretary are hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council this date. By way of explanation, in 1998, Mr. and Mrs. Carfang did in fact submit an application for a subdivision. They owned properties over near the Lipowski Automobile Lot on, on Lincoln Avenue. It is a single property with three homes, three smaller homes. They then sought a subdivision that would split the property into two properties, one containing one house, the other containing two homes. That approval was granted by the planning commission and was in fact granted by city council. We passed a resolution then. The laws, both our local and state laws, require a person who obtains a subdivision to record that subdivision at the recorder of deeds office within 90 days after the final approval. This was not done. And while there is no penalty, they cannot record their subdivision because it's well beyond, obviously, the 90 days. So the request has been made to council if they would consider kindly reapproving this subdivision so Mr. and Mrs. Carfang can go ahead and record it. And that's the reason for the resolution on the agenda of the seat.
May I have a motion to, adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck? This is resolution 2015 six. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfman?
Yes.
Those five, yes.
I have nothing for a member.
Under unfinished business, I have a letter here from FEMA. I don't know if you got a copy of it or not, but basically it's the approval of the hazardous mitigation plan that we submitted. And it says the hazardous mitigation plan for your community has been approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and your community is now eligible to apply to federal disaster systems until the plan expires as stated above. So I think Skip worked on that and you, I'm not sure who all was involved in that, but it's approved and nice work to all those involved. Also, under unfinished business, I want to make an appointment to the, to the Latrope Municipal Authority. I'm going to appoint Mr. Don Claire. Ms. Kelly?
Somewhere I have a resolution, Madam Mayor, I just have to get. The resolution, the resolution would read, appointing members to the Latrope Municipal Authority now therefore be resolved. Section one, that Don O'Clair being is hereby appointed, as a member of the Latrope Municipal Authority set term to expire on January 31, 2020, resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2015 seven. Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarin?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
No.
Mayor Wolfman?
Yes.
Those four, yes, one none.
Anyone have any? Anyone have any new business on council at this time? Wayne? Ms. Kelly?
No.
No, Madam Mayor.
At this time, we have our open forum citizens requests. Anybody from the audience wish to say anything, anything on your mind, anything you want to talk about? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address.
My name is Paul Hook, 121 West Tecum, Avenue, Latrobe. It's a very detailed explanation of the revitalization. Excuse me. I wonder if the council or the revitalization committee could speak to the railroad concerning the conditions of the three underpasses, Jefferson Street, Vigilance Street and Alexandria Street. The armwork on those three bridges is really looking shabby, rusty, and if, I guess it's Aurora's responsibility, I don't know, they could sand less that metal and get a nice bright coat of pins on it would really be an improvement. So I don't know. That would be.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a really good idea. Actually, four years ago, we had contacted the railroad and I had actually lined up, we raised about $1,500, and then we'd actually lined up contractors who were going to do it as a donation, their work, we were just going to pay for the supplies. I think they wanted around $4 million worth of insurance from the volunteers to paint it. I tried to explain through the course of several months that, that, you know, is arguably unreasonable because they're not on the railroad, they're on the street, right? So, you know, they were going to be painted back to the historical colors of the Pennsylvania Railroad. So you had those maroon, greenish type of gold colors. I don't think it's something that cannot happen and, you know, perhaps it's revisited. I know there's some new contacts, you know, Norfolk Southern, locally at least, but it has, at the time, it went all the way to the national headquarters, the request, and we were really close implementing, but the issue was the cost to get that type of insurance was prohibited. Now, doesn't mean it can't happen though. But I agree, it's in really bad shape, the, some of the concrete's fallen off. I wouldn't know about the zoning requirements, but we were just trying to fix it. I know there have been new lighting put in, I think.
Well, my way of thinking was to dress those three areas up. Excuse me, him, please. But anyway, I thank you for the input the Chad given us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the city's responsibility then, or the railroad?
No, I think it's the, it's the railroad. It's my understanding now, I tried to explain how bad of shape it was. Now, there's, there's both metal beams, okay, and then there's the concrete sort of baluster surrounding, but those are really bad shape, so.
Madam Mayor, as I recall, maybe joking helped me with my memory, we did enter into an agreement with Norfolk Southern, but that was only regarding the lighting.
Only regarding the lighting.
We did not agree to any further, we have agreed to maintain the lighting underneath the underpasses forever. It's our responsibility.
Yeah, if they put it up, Joe, we were supposed to take care of it then, right?
Correct. But not, not the painting or, or anything dealing with the underpass structure.
Simply just the lighting.
Joe, did they require the same money as far as insurance?
No. No, what it is, is they, they did in-house, they did all the light and all the work.
So they didn't require the extra insurance?
Right, right. And they're not requiring anything of us to went and replaced a light or a bulb.
It just seems like a awful lot.
Yeah, I don't want to, I can't remember the exact amount of millions that was required, but even that isn't impossible. Again, you know, it's not like, basically, you can tweak your liability coverage and your blanket insurance.
One thing we could look into is whether or not the condition of the underpass is creating a safety hazard, because if it is, I think a polite letter to the PUC might get some things moving. But it has to be in terms of some sort of safety hazard. So I guess that's the first question. Is it deteriorating without the paint and becoming a safety hazard? But PUC might, might get involved. There are no structural issues, are there? I haven't heard any discussed. Okay.
Anyone else?
I didn't, honestly. Anybody that is interested in having something on the sign, there are forms to fill out and then they get turned in to the city manager and, and as soon as we can get them put on the sign. But they will be available at the administration office at the window and we'll get them put on the website in a couple of days.
Anyone else? Anything else?
I would like, and I will try to make it a five-minute executive session, maybe seven, but.
City managers report?
Nothing at this time.
Now, as for the mayors report, I just encourage everyone to come in on March 2nd for the, yeah, neighborhood watch, I'm sorry to tell you to make it one, huh? Neighborhood watch and help Jerry and the group get all these things bagged and ready to go to the residents' doors. Anyone else? That's it? That's it then? Meeting is adjourned. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Can we adjourn and then go to executive session or have to go to executive session and adjourn?
The next meeting. We can announce it now, it's.
All right, well, I can adjourn now?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we're going into an executive session to discuss?
Matters of litigation.
Matters of litigation.